Alderman Pendelion, absent. Alderman Marsh?
Here.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Here.
Alderman Palmer?
Here.
Alderman Edelman?
Here.
Six present, three absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Birdy. May I please join me in a pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the law from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business this evening is reports of city officers, the first being comments by mayor. And I am pleased to report that we have three resolutions of appreciation this evening for individuals who have multiple years of service, from 21 to 30 years of service. And I'd like to read those into the record. The first individual, my understanding, is not going to be here this evening. It's for Daniel Keppel. And I'd like to read that resolution and we will take a vote on the resolutions after I have gone through all three of them here and presented them. The first one for Daniel is whereas Daniel L. Keppel has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since March 12, 1990, and whereas Daniel Keppel will honorably retire from the city on June 30, 2011, and whereas Daniel Keppel served in the following positions during his dedicated career as a maintenance man and maintenance worker, too, in the Parks, Forestry, and Parks and Recreation Departments. Now, therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Daniel Keppel for a public service faithfully performed and be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Daniel Keppel this 20th day of June 2011. And again, we want to thank Daniel for 21 years of service. That's quite an honor. We're certainly going to miss him and we will get this to Daniel.
Yep.
And the next one, I know that Bob would like to make some comments before the next two individuals come up, but the next one will be for William or Bill Hensel for 28 years of service.
Sure. And Bill, can I ask you to please come forward to the podium? The people at home want to see you. The very first thing I think I would point out is I think we should all work at the water plant because if you notice Bill's picture from 28 years ago and then today, it doesn't look like he's aged at all.
Fountain of youth.
Maybe the glasses are a little different, but that's about it.
Not much.
Not much, I know. There must be something in the water, I think, down there. But you know, most—
What's that?
He has more hair now than he did before.
Thank you. Again, somebody in the back like that one can— I think, a couple of things. Number one, I think most residents wouldn't know Bill, but certainly need him and appreciate him every day. When they get up, they turn on the shower, they turn on the faucet, and we have some of the best drinking water anywhere in the country. And we take that for granted. I didn't have the pleasure of really knowing Bill all that well until we did the membrane filtration upgrade. And that was such a project that took a lot of time, a lot of effort, and for me anyways, developed a great respect for all that Bill knows and all that he does for this community on a day-to-day basis. And the fact that, you know, Bill has grown up in this community and so this community is a very important part of his life, and I know his wife Nancy and his entire family. So we wish Bill the best of luck, and Bill won't be going far. He'll just be spending more time out at Deer Path with Tom Nats.
That's correct.
So if you need any—you need to find him, that's where to find him. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to read the resolution?
I certainly will. And before I do that, I'll just say some of the same comments. Bill, I enjoyed working with you over the years as the head of Public Works, and we spent a lot of time at the water plant, and you did a fantastic job. I think we were the first one in Illinois to do the membrane ultrafiltration. And we're still learning, but it's been a great project. You did a great job managing it and a great job managing the plant. And I also know that you will be at Deer Path, and I know that since you followed me last year in our foursome, you have plenty of my lost golf balls, so I know you'll have ample supply to play this year.
I—you know, I haven't found any this year, so you're getting better.
I just haven't played much. He always knows what to say, even on the last day of retirement. Let me read the resolution. Whereas Bill Hensel has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since July 5, 1983, and whereas Bill Hensel will honorably retire from the city on June 30, 2011, whereas Bill Hensel served in the following positions during his dedicated career: Water Plant Operator, 1983; Promoted to Chief Water Plant Operator, August 1990; whereas Bill Hensel as Chief Water Plant Operator constantly supplied Lake Forest residents with the highest quality water that surpassed state of Illinois quality standards; and whereas Bill Hensel had overall responsibility for the Water Plant Shoreline Protection Project, the 36-inch transmission main project, interior and exterior painting of the city's elevated water tank, and multiple upgrades to the city's sanitary sewer lift stations; and whereas Bill Hensel was responsible for the state's first ultrafiltration membrane water plant and the state's first sodium hypochlorite generation system; and whereas William Hensel was instrumental in the replacement of all city water meters in 2004 and 2005 to the upgrade to each of the city's interconnects with Lake Bluff and Highland Park and recent, the Water Loss Report. Now, therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Bill Hensel for a public service faithfully performed and be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Bill Hensel this 20th day of June 2011. Congratulations, Bill.
Go ahead. Bill, come inside here and stand next to the mayor. We got to get a good picture. Wait, don't talk yet because you got to talk on the microphone. There's thousands of people at home wanting to hear you.
This is very impressive, but I just want everyone to know that this is not a one-person thing here. There was a large group effort in every one of these projects, including former mayor Kerr, former aldermen, ad hoc committees, and most of all, the people at the water plant. We have a very dedicated crew, and I just want everyone to know that everyone contributed to all these projects. So, thank you. This is very, very nice, but a lot of thanks go to many people. So, thank you very much, council.
Thank you, Bill.
Tom Nats, could you please come forward? They're not going to recognize you. This is the difference between working at the water plant and being the director of Public Works. This is a hard one for me because for at least the last 20 years that I've been here, Tom has been not only a good friend, but a trusted advisor. Being the director of one of the largest departments in the city, Tom has had his hands full for as long as I've known him and have always done it in a very calm, caring, but professional way. And I think the community has been extremely well-served by Tom's leadership. There's been a lot of things going on in the department. I'm happy to say that after 20 years, we finally got a new municipal services building that I think Tom was working on for about 20 years until we could decide exactly where to put it after deciding to move it. But as with that project and all the projects that Tom worked on, he did so with patience, listening, and I think above all, always thinking about what was in the best interest of the residents of Lake Forest. So Tom is going to be terribly missed by everybody in the city, but particularly by myself. So, Tom, thank you.
And again, I'd just add a few comments again for Tom. I—again, greatly appreciated working with you over at least the last 10 years, especially on the new municipal services project and building. A lot of—a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of nights, a lot of days, and all the years in that whole project, and you did a fantastic job, pretty much as the lead individual, bringing all—not only that project together, but all the departments that were going to move into that building together. I think that was probably even harder than—the building the building itself. And you did a fantastic job of being the leader and the one taking up the reins to do that. And I thank you personally, and the city thanks you for all your your hard work over the last 30 years. And with that, I'd like to read the resolution into the—to the record. Whereas Tom Nats has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since March 23, 1981, and whereas Tom Nats will honorably retire from the city on June 30, 2011, and whereas Tom Nats served in the following positions during his dedicated career: Maintenance Man, March 1981; Promoted to Foreman, September 1981; Promoted to Superintendent of Parks, Forestry, and Grounds, August 1984; Promoted to Director of Public Works, September 1989. Whereas Tom Nats, while under his supervision as Director of Public Works, had overall responsibility of multiple capital improvement projects to include the cemetery gatehouse and memorial gardens, the water plant rehabilitation project, Western Avenue reconstruction, expansion of the city's recycling program, development and implementation of the snow and rainfall emergency plans, and significant improvements to the services provided by each of the operating sections within Public Works. And whereas Tom Nats was responsible for obtaining the city's composting permit, saving the city thousands of dollars by processing its own yardways within city limits. And whereas Tom Nats served the project leader for the recently constructed municipal services building, not only completing the project on time and under budget, but also earning a LEED Gold Award for its environmental sustainability. Now, therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Tom Nats for a public service faithfully performed and be it therefore resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Tom Nats this 20th day of June 2011. Congratulations, Tom.
Just a couple words because most people know I'm not real long-winded here. 30 years does go by very quickly. I thought it did until I saw that picture, and then maybe it takes a longer to think to put the where you— But Bill Hensel took the—kind of the words out of my mouth that it's no one person that accomplishes these tasks for the city. It's the organization. As I've talked to many people who have been retiring before, that's all they say, how great the organization is. Not only from the excellent staff from all departments, but the support we get from City Council, both past and present. It's phenomenal bit of work for you guys, so I have nothing but thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I move to approve the resolutions as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you.
I might just add that Tom is a braver and must be a much smarter man than I because he's retiring in the midst of one daughter getting married last year and another one coming up here shortly. How he's able to fund two of those and still retire is beyond me, but I guess Julie must be taking on another job to help pay for it, so. Congratulations.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is the city manager contract approval. We did meet in the executive session earlier this this evening with the council to review that. The council has—has reviewed it, and the agreement's on page 15. The recommended action is approval of the agreement as presented. I move to approve the agreement as presented.
I'll second. Go ahead.
No, I goes to the marsh.
No, no, that's all right.
That's a roll call. Vote please.
Can I—can I make one comment, just so we make sure that we're on the record here? First of all, I think it was the sense of the entire city council that we were very happy with Bob's performance last year. I think that we are very lucky and the citizens of Lake Forest are very lucky to have someone of his skill, experience, and talents be our city manager. Secondly, we want to make sure that all matters regarding the contract and any financial matters with the contract are well-known to our citizens. We've done a very good job, I think, of not only looking at Bob's compensation against other of his peers in the—in the—who are also city managers in the region. We think that we're offering Bob a very fair and competitive compensation plan. And in addition to that, there's no hidden, quote, pension or any other kinds of things that we've seen articles in the Chicago Tribune and elsewhere, and I want to make sure that the citizens of Lake Forest know that we have fully looked at this, and—and as the city council, we are responsible for it, and we're honored to have Bob continue to agree to be our city manager.
Just a quick comment, especially in the recession the past three years. I appreciate the leadership role you've taken in guiding Lake Forest and municipalities in the state and dealing with pension programs and other issues that have come up with the state. I hope that we're going to be approving many contracts in the future. You deserve a lot more. I don't think a lot of the residents of the city appreciate and understand what you do and how many hours you put in on a weekly basis. You're underpaid, and I think this is the least we could do. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, there was a clarification that I had offered to the agreement. I presume that the motion was intended to include that clarification.
Yes, it was. Yes. Roll call. Vote please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Five yays, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy, and thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Our next item on the agenda is an appointment to zoning board of appeals. We have—just for the record, Lloyd Culbertson will be appointed as the liaison between the ZBA and the plant commission. He's a Ward Four member. And a new member is Jay Kennedy, who'll be appointed again from Ward Four. The recommended action is approve the new appointments as noted. I move to approve the appointments as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion carries. That concludes my comments for this evening. The next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Members of the council, first, let me say thank you very much for your vote of confidence. It really is a privilege, and I'm very fortunate to work in a community as beautiful and professional as the City of Lake Forest. So, thank you very much. Before we get to the first item on the agenda, I just wanted to report if any of you were in downtown Lake Forest on Saturday, hopefully you went to the farmer's market. We think we had over 1,000 visitors to the inaugural event. It seemed to go very well. The weather cooperated. And we've got farmer's market coming up for the next few Saturdays from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. So if you didn't get all of your produce last Saturday, please come again. We're going to have a few different vendors at the next farmer's market, and so it should be—it should be pretty good. This evening, we have a representative from ComEd here, James Dudek, who is going to present the annual report to the city council on the history of activities in both the City of Lake Forest as well as the ComEd service area. So, James, it's all yours.
Good evening and thank you. First, I'd like to thank Mayor James Cowie and the City of Lake Forest for inviting me with the—invited me here for the opportunity to speak with all of you this evening. My name is James Dudek, and I am the Commonwealth Citizen External Affairs Manager for the City of Lake Forest. And before I get into my program here, I just wanted to recognize that with me today is the director of my department, Arthur Barcy-Mont. He's the Director of External Affairs. Today's agenda, I wanted to separate it into three different components. First, first bullet there is the 2010 annual report update of performance for the city from last year. Second bullet, process when contacting ComEd. And the third bullet is an update on the Senate Bill 1652, which we refer to as the Energy Infrastructure Modernization Act update. As far as the annual report, there's a couple key issues, a couple key items to be aware of. We're going to discuss average number of interruptions by cause and review the SAFE and KDI indices for the municipality. SAFE is an acronym that stands for the System Average Interruption Frequency Index, or the average number of interruptions by customer. KDI stands for the Customer Average Interruption Duration Index, or the average length of customer interruptions in minutes. And then we'll touch on some system improvements that were done in 2010 and also what's planned for 2011. And also—the also the rest of the agenda, we'll talk about some of the some of the areas that the constituents of Lake Forest need to know in terms of contacting ComEd. So let's begin with the 2010 annual report. The graph, although it's a little bit small, indicates, depicts the city limits of the City of Lake Forest. And ComEd has 26 circuits that feed the city. The population—or the number of customers, I should say, that we feed in the city is 8,223 customers. These two slides show the SAFE indices for both storm and non-storm-related outages. SAFE is defined, again, as the number of interruptions per customer on an annual basis for the municipality for the past five years. So on the left half of the—the left half graph there indicates the—those components. Now, the diamond-shaped legend shows the ComEd system average, and for 2010, I've noted that it's 1.35. The bar graph shows how the city is performing in relation to the ComEd system average. So for 2010, the—the system average across ComEd was 1.35. The darker shaded blue bar there indicates the performance for the city, which was .72. That little slice of blue above that shaded, darker shaded blue bar, that is a one-time storm that happened last year on June 18, and that was the component of that storm. So statistically, it increased your—your overall SAFE up to .8, which means that throughout the 2010 year, each one of your customers, on average, had less than one outage per year. Over on the right side, the SAFE with non-storm for 2010 is .58. That's what the—that's what the city experienced. The system average is .89. So based upon the statistics for SAFE for 2010, ComEd is pleased to report that there was a very favorable year for—for the city. Next two slides, we—we take a look at the KDI indices. Again, KDI is defined as the average length of customer interruption in minutes on an annual basis for your municipality for the past five years. The diamond-shaped legend, again, shows this ComEd system average. The ComEd system average in 2010 was 181 minutes. The—the city, when you take a look at the—the KDI with the—with the storms included, on average, was 127 minutes without the June 18 storm. The one-time—the one-time storm of June 18 increased the the KDI for the city up to a total of 199 minutes, slightly above the system—the system average of 181 minutes. If you look on the right-hand side there, the KDI non-storm, the system average is 84 minutes to get restored while the performance of the village was 113 minutes. So pretty close in line there. This slide here, next slide, it depicts the 2010 average number of interruptions by cause. And there's—there's three different legends there, kind of small. The first bar is—the beige bar indicates the year 2010. The—the green bar indicates the year 2009, and the blue is 2008. So, looking over the—the—the three-year history for SAFE by cause, the—the history here has—it has a pretty constant type of—type of, I would say, illustration across the categories. There's not really one—one component that is—that is actually a lot more based on a year—year versus year basis. Now talking about some system improvements for 2010 and what ComEd has—has done. First component there, the capacity improvement. We—we—our-nour nomenclature on our circuits are—as such, there's some alpha and numerical—numerical values there. First one I want to talk about is the circuit capacity improvement on circuit C0410X. And this circuit was modified to allow for some load relief to the area to prevent some low voltage conditions. This is very close to the—the location was very close to the Lake Forest College. Modifications included the installation of some new overhead cable, transformers, and switchgear. Areas modified were specifically on Frost Place and Rosemary Road. Getting on to the next reliability improvement, underground cable program. First circuit there, Charlie 0411. At this location, we ComEd approximately installed 1,850 feet of new cable, and this was completed in early 2010, and this is in the area of Ridge and Wesley. Next circuit, Charlie 043. 752 feet of new cable was replaced to prevent further cable faults near Ode Mill Road and Christina Lane. Next circuit, Charlie 046 Yankee. 369 feet of cable replaced in Lincolnshire, and this also supported reliability in Lake Forest. And then finally, Charlie 047. 948 feet of cable replaced to prevent future cable faults near Ridge Road and Shawford Way. Finally, the vegetation management. There was no four-year cycle planning for—for tree trimming last year, although there was some mid-cycle trimming where necessary, and that circuit, Alpha 6618, received some mid-cycle tree trimming for 2010. What's new for 2011 planned work? We are at that point where it's necessary to—to look at the four psych—the four-year cycle trims for most of the circuits in the city. 24 to 24—26 circuits are scheduled for line clearance, tree pruning, and vegetation maintenance. This maintenance is performed again on a four-year cycle to reduce vegetation-related interruptions on the overhead distribution system. And that tree trimming is all coordinated with the City of—City of Lake Forest. That concludes my review of the annual report. Any questions on reliability?
Were the improvements that you made likely to stop another recurrence of what happened in the big storm?
The—are you referring to the storm this year or the storm last year?
The bad storm we had last year, I think, is the one that is the blip. Of those improvements that you made, how many of them were directed at improving or remedying problems that caused outages during that storm?
Most—most of the improvements that you saw for 2010 are based upon long-duration outages that occur inside the city. So as part of the storm, some of those feeders that had some history of outages in—the—in your community, after the storms are over with, we have a team of reliability engineers that go out and actually walk the circuit down. They overlay weather data as far as where lightning strikes and other wind damage or wind potentials were in the area, and they look for specifically for problem areas caused by the weather that has—that has come through. So yes, a lot of that—a lot of that work that you saw that happened in—in 2010 was related— 2010, uh, was related to storm, and then there's also another component that's just a, uh, cable replacement program, where we take a look at various, uh, sectors of, of the distribution system, and where we're seeing weaknesses, uh, we have systematic and programmatic, uh, uh, programs that are actually, uh, put in-flight to mitigate future outages.
But based on what you know, the improvements that were made, if we had that same storm again this year, would there still be outages?
Well, you know, from last, uh, from last year, the, the storm was, you know, was high winds, uh, back in June, a lot of lightning, uh, so it was a, uh, it was a very violent storm. Contrasting that to, uh, the, the February, uh, storm, the snowstorm that we had, uh, equally high winds, no lightning, of course, but nonetheless, uh, the system, uh, responded very well, uh, based upon, uh, the comparison of the two storms.
With snow, not water, though. Big difference.
It's, 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 it's different, but yet, it really, when you, when you think-
Has its own problems.
The wind, the wind is the problem for the utility, you know, the wind and, and also-
When there are, when there aren't leaves on the trees, it's a lot easier for the trees to stand up, although if they get iced over, I suppose, it's the same thing.
Wind and trees, uh, excuse me, wind and leaves in the summer, no good for us. Ice and, and wind in the winter, that's even, that's, that's equally no good because it causes things to snap.
I, I, I like the, uh, program the ComEd has put in where you can get a text message if you get a power outage.
Yes.
You'll automatically get it, and it will give you an estimate of when the power will be restored.
Right.
It, I've, I've used that, and it's been very helpful.
Oh, good. Yeah, I'm glad you, I'm glad you signed up for that. A lot of our customers have, and later on, we're gonna talk a little bit about the Senate Bill 1652, which would even further on enhance some of those features that, uh, we're able to give our customers.
James, uh, could you go back to the slide about response times, please?
Yes.
Could you, uh, oh, one more. Could you maybe just talk for a minute about, um, why it looks like historically, even though it's not been great, Lake Forest has tended to be above average in terms of response time? Is it something about the makeup of the utility system in the community, the community itself? What causes us to be above average on a regular basis?
As far as, uh, as far as beating the system average, uh, what, what the, uh, the system is put together, you know, in terms of, uh, various personnel on the street at any given time. Uh, so we, there's always coverage of, of people on the street. When storms come around, uh, we, uh, we employ, uh, storm teams, or the strategy changes slightly where you'll have adequate, uh, additional coverage, I should say, of, uh, not only the first responders, but also for construction and maintenance type of workers to make the actual repairs. So the way, the, the way you fare out is, uh, you know, the, the philosophy behind storm response is that ComEd takes a look at outages, uh, in terms of numbers of people that are out of service. So the, the largest component of customers out of service usually occurs when a feeder lacks out, when one of those circuits lack out. So what ComEd will do is they'll respond to that particular outage, uh, initially versus maybe an individual residence or, or commercial establishment that's just a, a single customer that's out. So it, it, it's a combination of putting the correct strategy, uh, in play when the storm hit and, and the outages do occur, and it's also, uh, a benefit to have that many more people on the street.
Well, not to put words in your mouth, but let me see if I understand what you just said. Um, or maybe there's two suppositions. Number one is, most of the storms are coming from the west, and so communities west of us are probably getting hit first, and they're getting outages before we do. But number two is, is that the low densities of the community probably don't play in our favor when you're making the calculations as to where to deploy your, your crews.
Well, when, when the storms hit, you know, we have central, uh, locations, uh, Liberty Ville is one, Skokie is another, uh, that's, that's in your vicinity. Uh, and then there's several other barns that, uh, employ, uh, smaller groups of, of response people. So it, it's, it's, again, once you get into a storm mode or storm restoration process, uh, personnel is, is dispersed, uh, throughout the, throughout the territories more strategically. So it, uh, you're fortunate that you're between the Liberty Ville and the Skokie areas, you know, Skokie to the south, but Liberty Ville to the west. So you, in essence, you, at times, you may be getting support from two offices rather than if you were, say, a Waukegan customer, uh, that would be waiting, and somebody from Liberty Ville.
And actually, I think, Jim, for the overall numbers, you know, the left-hand side correctly, the, the number of minutes in Lake Forest is actually performing better than the ComEd system. Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct, yeah. On average, if you take a, if you take away the big storm from last June, uh, and, and then include all the other outages that occurred, uh, Lake Forest, uh, residences, or I should say, Lake Forest customers of ComEd, on average, had a 127-minute outage, uh, where, that was the duration of the outage. The system average was 181. So you look at that 127 minutes, so that's two hours and seven minutes, uh, to respond, and that's from the time the residents or the commercial customer calls in to our customer service board, gives the information, and the clock starts ticking at that point. The ticket's generated, it gets analyzed in our, uh, Joliet office, it gets to a dispatcher's desk, it's, gets sent out to a, a truck that's available. The truck may have to drive, you know, a half hour, 45 minutes, get to the area, assess what's going on in terms of what's causing the outage, try to, uh, make the, make the area safe and, and switch into a auxiliary, uh, source, and bring that customer back up. So that, for, for two hours, that's a lot of work that goes on in a couple hours. So that, so those are, you know, those are first quartile numbers, you know, the, the, those diamonds that you see up there, uh, we are considered first quartile in, in the nation in terms of KD response.
And just a trivia question, and, uh, obviously everyone's focus is on storm-related or more traumatic dilemmas with the system, which you know the cause for. But as far as, um, non-traumatic, uh, power outage, in this area, what is the most common, uh, system breakdown that we have? Is there items in the infrastructure that are just getting old and need replacement at this point?
Well, if you, if you kinda look at this, uh, this graph here, this, this table here, SAFI again is, you know, is, is the, is the cause of the, of your outages. So, you know, you look at the, the bars there, that, uh, you know, you see quite a bit of, uh, color to. Uh, tree-related is one category, uh, underground equipment is another category, uh, the others are overhead and weather-related are, are kind, uh, that are, are pretty predominant in, in this graph. So you have, the, the city has quite a bit of overhead exposure, uh, that's going through the, uh, as part of our distribution system. There is a considerable amount of underground also. And to your point, uh, yeah, the, the, uh, facilities, you know, they, they, uh, they do, uh, they do get, they do age, although they are also monitored. Uh, and they are, and when there is problems on the circuit, the, uh, the reliability engineers do make the appropriate, uh, analysis in terms of what exactly caused that circuit to stop working. And they would actually come out here. Electrify stays on, there's no more interruptions, but they're here, you know, with binoculars on the ground, there's, they're here with, uh, also, uh, bucket trucks, and they're surveying the area to make sure that there's no, nothing left behind that would cause future problems based upon that one incident. Thank you.
One, one question for you, James. Uh, I know you were in contact with a neighbor of mine that contacted you about, um, his belief that he had more outages in his area compared to other areas in the city, and I don't know what transpired, I'm pretty sure he went on vacation or left town, but do you have anything to add for Mr. Pearson?
I, I met with, yes, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I did meet with Mr. Pearson, uh, last week, and, uh, very nice man. Uh, we sat down and, uh, some, another neighbor was with us, and so we were discussing, uh, some of the reliability, uh, issues that he was experiencing. The circuit, I took a look at his circuit, uh, that he is fed from, uh, the source circuit, and it, and that circuit comes, uh, down as a main feed down Old Mill Road, and then it taps, uh, and moves northbound on Telegraph Road, uh, which is his adri, his, his street. Prior to, when you get into the areas of 20, uh, 2008, 2009, the, uh, the, the tap that he was, that he is on in terms of the, uh, the system, was experiencing a lot of tree-related outages. And so in, uh, 2010, there was some extensive work done to that section of the, uh, of, of the feeder. Uh, we came out here with our reliability, uh, team, uh, right at the very onset of that corner moving northbound, there were some, uh, three fuses that were recalibrated, and then there was also some additional, uh, vegetation, uh, management, uh, type of equipment, uh, protection, wildlife protection equipment to put on, to be put on the circuits at various spots of points of open connections. And then a thorough walk down was done, all the way going further north until you get closer to, and I, forgive me, I forget the street, but there's, it, it, we go back down underground, uh, i- i- into our system at that point. So that was a solid look at, uh, strengthening the system. Uh, and based upon that, uh, that would, with that work being done, in the year 2010, uh, that circuit, that stretch of circuit did not see any outages. Uh, then we move into 2011, uh, there was the February's, uh, winter blizzard, uh, that had a tree limb come down and cause an outage for Mr. Pearson. And then, uh, subsequently, this is the same year for the four-cycle maintenance. So we were on that circuit in springtime, and we were able to, uh, do some tree trimming, uh, in, in cooperation with the city, uh, for vegetation management control. And the last interruption, uh, which was at the end of May, just about a month or so ago, uh, there was a lightning storm that came through, I think it was on May the 29th, uh, that circuit got hit by, uh, a bolt of lightning. So, uh, that caused the outage, caused, uh, the circuit to open up. So if you look at the history, '08, '09, yes, problems, we took care of them in 10. Uh, he had a very good 10. Uh, 11, he had two instances, one was attributed to that, uh, pretty, uh, pretty, uh, strong, uh, winter blizzard in February 1st, the other one was Mother Nature, you know, with, with the lightning strike. Uh, but, uh, we're confident with the tree trimming that we performed in the springtime, uh, that, that, that we, you know, solidified the system, and I've, uh, I've responded to Mr. Pearson and told him that I'd be keeping an eye on that circuit to make sure that if anything starts to, uh, go abnormal with it, we'll be on it.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, moving on to the, uh, agenda here, uh, I wanted just to briefly talk about the process to contact, uh, when contacting ComEd. And, uh, you know, ComEd has a couple of vehicles to, to contact us, there's always the 1-800-Eddison One number, uh, that everybody should be aware of, uh, if not, uh, you know, that is the main number to call our customer service board, it's available at 24/7. Or you have the option of, uh, of going to the internet if, if you wish, uh, at the www.comed.com, uh, to report a variety of things. Just a couple of things I wanted to touch on here, you know, when you, when, uh, your, the lights go out and you do have, unfortunately, you have a power outage. It's very important for the, uh, for the residents of, uh, residents and the commercial customers of the city to, to call in and make contact with ComEd, only because our system is not automated to the point where we know where every outage is. Uh, we know when large feeders lack out, we have communication equipment that our control center sees. Uh, some of the stations, uh, that have, uh, ma, uh, a smaller section of distribution system, there might be some automation on there, allows us to see those outages. But there's frequently a lot of pocket areas that, uh, end up having, uh, having outages that, uh, unless our customers are calling us. Uh, we repair the main line, we'll repair those, uh, those taps, and we drive off because nobody else is calling in to, to tell us that they're out of power. So in the system that we're dealing with now, that's, that's what we have to rely on, our customers to call us to make sure they make a record of, of calling in and, and telling us that they're out of power. If we get it to the Senate Bill 1652 with the smart meters and the smart grid, all that becomes automatic. And it's, uh, we'll have a control panel there that has a bunch of red and green dots, uh, for all the residences, and good things are, good thing is, uh, good things will happen when everything is green, when things start going red, then we know we have power outages. Also, uh, just, uh, touching on, uh, if any of your constituents are experiencing reliability issues, please report those using the 1-800-Eddison One number. Uh, electronic copy is made of, of the report and is sent to the appropriate department. And as always, you know, as your External Affairs Manager for the City of, uh, of Lake Forest, I'm available to, uh, to, uh, help facilitate any, any type of, uh, inquiries that are not satisfactorily being handled.
Excuse me, what is the internet address for ComEd?
www dot comed, C-O-M-E-D dot com. Thanks. And then finally, uh, the Senate Bill 1652, which is the Energy Infrastructure Modernization Act. Uh, just a very brief, uh, summary of what's going on here. Uh, the pro, the program investment is $2.6 billion, uh, over the next 10 years. Uh, if you, if you take a look at the first component, 1.1 billion is set to, uh, modernize the electric infrastructure, and that's probably going, uh, if, if everything is, uh, at pass, uh, in terms of, uh, coming into law, that'd probably happen in a five-year timeframe, where we would spend 1.1 billion dollars to modernize the electric infrastructure. This would include, uh, replacement of wooden poles, new overhead conductorine, uh, new underground cable installations, upgrading of substations and transformers, uh, refurbishing of manholes, and also, uh, installation of a lot of automa, uh, distribution automation devices. The second part is 1.5 billion dollars, and that's to provide the smart meters. Uh, the smart meters, you know, this, this would be a, a meter that would be changed out at, at every customer. Uh, it would give, it would have the ability to, uh, provide almost real-time data to each of the customers. Uh, many of the appliances in the, uh, that are being manufactured now are starting to integrate, uh, the smart meter chips or communication devices between smart meters and the appliances you're buying, furnaces, et cetera. So that eventually, if, if you have, if you get this set up correctly, and you, you, you get a, uh, control panel, uh, for the monitoring of the entire, uh, the entire, uh, theory behind this, is that, you know, you'll have everything on that, on that iPad essentially being monitored so that, you know, let's say, for example, you're washing your dishes at seven o'clock at night after dinner, uh, and it's gonna show you, based upon the rate that you're on, uh, you're paying 12 cents every hour to run the dishwasher. But then you can bring it over to maybe two in the morning, and you'll find out it costs you three cents a kilowatt hour to, to, to wash your dishes. So, uh, if you need your dishes washed at seven, well, then you pay the premium of maybe 12 cents. If you can wait and run the dishwasher at night when everybody goes to bed, the rates change, and there's the real savings behind there. So based upon that type of, uh, an example, uh, every customer with a smart meter will have access to money-saving programs and the ensuing technologies. Also, uh, this investment will create thousands of new jobs, uh, based upon, you know, the amount of work that's gonna be needed to get that, uh, put into, uh, put, get it installed and up and running. Uh, the ICC will still have oversight of ComEd and this, and this particular program, they're, they're not losing any oversight whatsoever. Uh, and also, as it stands right now, this bill has passed both the House of Representatives and the Senate in Springfield. So what I've, uh, also included in each of your packets, uh, Councilman, is the, um, is a, a couple of information fact sheets that give a little bit deeper information on, on the Senate Bill 1652. But, uh, you know, we are, we are, uh, const, uh, we are currently still, uh, in discussions with the, uh, with the bill, and we're hoping for signature by the Governor. And, uh, once again, I'd like to thank the invitation to come in to, to speak before you, and if there's no other questions, uh, that ends my report.
Thank you, James. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, James. Our next, uh, item on the agenda this evening is Council Committee Reports, the first being the Finance Committee. Uh, Alderman Pendleone is, is absent this evening. We, we have a consideration of the Annual Appropriation Ordinance for fiscal year 2012, and approval of rollovers is the first reading, presented by Kathy Rinderson, the Finance Director. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. The annual municipal budget represents the city's financial plan for expenditures, uh, while the annual appropriation ordinance is the formal legal mechanism, uh, by which the City Council authorizes the annual expenditures. State statutes require the passage of an appropriation ordinance, which must be filed with the county clerk by the end of July. The appropriation ordinance provides a 10% contingency in the expenditures, um, above the amount of the budget. However, the City Council and city, city staff still follow the adopted budget as its spending guideline, not the appropriation ordinance. In addition, in order to provide more accurate and efficient accounting, uh, and budgeting of city funds, an annual rollover of funds is required. This eliminates both under and over budgeting of funds in the new fiscal year and is widely used standard practice in most municipal governments. The items on the, on the rollover list consisted of projects that were appropriated in FY11 and will not be completed until FY12. We're asking for approval of the first reading of the ordinance and the rollovers. Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Kathy. Our next item on the agenda is the Housing Trust. Alderman Marsh?
A quick report, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, the Housing Trust met on June 14th. Uh, we covered four topics at that point. One was the, uh, pilot, uh, home purchase program with the community partners. Um, they're still in the process of identifying potential homes to, uh, purchase. The council will recall, we authorized a couple, uh, programs in that regard. Uh, secondly, there was discussion about, uh, continued discussion about options for telegraph in Everett Road. Thirdly, there was, uh, we are still waiting for a report from, uh, Senior Cottage Foundations. I know, Don, you've asked me a couple of questions on that, and we're still hoping to get that. We're not remiss in doing our job here and we, we plan to get back to council on that. So, I know that's something that's on your mind. And, uh, finally, we, uh, heard from the college and the hospital with respect to some of their initiatives. So, work continues and, and again, I think it's great that we have an extended committee. So, thank you, Mayor, for that.
Thank you, Alderman Marsh. Our next item on the agenda is Public Works Committee. Alderman Novit?
And I'm not sure how we want to handle this item because we went over the large majority at an earlier Public Works informational meeting, the sa- well, earlier this evening. Uh, but briefly overviewing what we did go through, uh, we were presented, uh, by Ken Magnus and Ramish with an overview of the North Shore Sanitary District inflow and infiltration reports, uh, that have been a continued, uh, dilemma that we want to solve as far as infiltration of storm water into our sewer system and how to reduce the flow of, uh, uh, storm water into, uh, the system, which, uh, eventually backs up the system in a heavy rain event. Uh, focus of that meeting was, uh, looking at not so much the public sewers, but private sewers, and how we could reduce the infiltration into homeowner sewer systems. Uh, it's gonna be further explored and, uh, there is costs that would be, uh, suffered by a homeowner if they were gonna improve the sewers to reduce the infiltration. Uh, we're gonna examine this. Uh, there's nothing imminent, but again, we're looking at ways to reduce infiltration into the public sewer system of storm water. Uh, Ken, if you have any further comments of something I've missed, be my guest.
Well, we also talked about the expansion of the inspection of the houses, uh, divide, find, uh, inflow sources and concentrate on certain areas. And, uh, we're gonna start deepening those efforts, as well as the, looking at the individual services.
We'll bring back a recommendation, uh, to your July 18th meeting on that specific program.
Thank you. Um, aside from that, that's all that was really mentioned, and, uh, we did go over a review of, uh, the future meeting schedule, which will be determined. And that's all I have to report at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Novit. Our next one is the Senior Resources Commission, also Alderman Novit?
And very briefly, uh, the Senior Resource, uh, Commission, uh, did hold on Friday, June 10th. It was a public health fair, uh, that was very successful and probably will, uh, encourage, uh, further, uh, future health fairs held by the, uh, Senior Resource Commission. Also happily, the, uh, new bus for the senior center is coming up and will probably, uh, be on delivery sometime in the early part of July. Uh, when we get that, the only thing that has to be done is the city has to, um, catalog it, um, paint it so it has the city colors on it, and hopefully it'll be in service for maybe about five or 10 years post that. Uh, but, all's well, budget's well, and, uh, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Our next item is Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee. Uh, nothing new to report in that regard. Uh, that concludes the, um, uh, all the different committee reports. Our next one is comments by council members. Any additional comments?
Mr. Mayor, I did have one quick comment. Um, if you remember last year in the fall, we, uh, completed the project on Waukegan Road for the lighting, uh, upgrades for the Waukegan Road Business District. And, um, I think there was a lot of positive comments on that, uh, that lighting upgrade. There were also a lot of negative comments that I received from residents in both the third and the fourth ward about the intensity of those lights. And have had ongoing discussions with Ramish for several months about how to solve that, uh, in light of regulations by IDOT, as well as maintaining level of public safety. And just recently, in, in consort with installing some new arms on some of those lights, uh, Ramish, uh, was able to, um, allow the contractor to actually go in and replace the 400-watt clear bulbs in those fixtures with 400-watt coated bulbs, which have softened the light. Have already, already received, uh, three or four emails and calls from residents who are really, can noticeably tell the difference. So, I just simply wanted to thank Ramish for all of his persistence on that. Took quite a while, uh, but I think it, it paid off. And I, again, the upgraded lighting looks terrific, and I think the glare and the level of lighting now is an appropriate, uh, amount there for the, for the city. And I'm very pleased with how it's all, all turned out. So, thanks to him.
Great. Very cool.
And just one comment because I can't resist. Farmers Market this last Saturday, as mentioned by Bob, was, um, at least I thought, successful on its first, um, Saturday. It is gonna be held, I guess, future Saturdays from seven in the morning till 12. Um, it's a great way to kind of meet your neighbors, get out in the fresh air, and enjoy the summer. And, um, I, I saw Susan Kelsey was out there with her head on and apron and working away, but I, I thought it was a great, great item, and I, I encourage people to get out there for the rest of the summer and, and enjoy it. But a little plug for that.
And just so you know, it's not all, uh, farm produce. There's some great sweets there as well, 'cause we visited and brought those home too, so.
There was a lot of asparagus and strawberries though, as well.
It's a season.
Exactly, exactly. It was a good, good event.
As well as not in the health topic, but donuts and baked goods, uh, went well also. And dog treats.
Any other comments by council members? No? Our next item on the agenda is opportunity for public to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Anyone from the public this evening? No? Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening. We have, one, a consideration of approval of the prevailing wages resolution. Two is resolution to appoint an authorized representative as alternative to the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency. And three is approval of the minutes from the June 6 through 11 regular City Council meeting. Could entertain one or all, it's your desire.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Five VAs, no NAs. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie. Our next item on the agenda this evening is ordinances. Uh, the first being a consideration of the ordinance amending section 40 dash 2 dash 1200 of chapter 40, traffic of the city code of Lake Forest, 1971, revising schedule two, which is stop signs by installing a stop sign on westbound Summit Place at the intersection with Summit Avenue. This item was discussed earlier at the Public Works meeting this evening. Uh, any other discussion this evening? The recommendation was to, uh, I believe that we spoke at that point, that, to probably just pass first, uh, reading.
First reading, right. That would be great.
Okay.
If everybody's willing to do that.
So, I'll make a motion to appro- approve first reading.
And second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. Our next item on the agenda this evening is new business. We have an authorization to enter into an agreement with Illinois Department of Transportation for the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funding related to the East Lake Forest Train Depot, presented by Karina Walter, who's Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. At your last City Council meeting, you approved in substantial form the agreement between the City of Lake Forest and Metra for the $250,000 towards reservation, restoration of the train station, in addition to a long-term lease with the Union Pacific. This evening, in order for the project to actually commence, we're gonna need to approve an agreement with IDOT for the actual funding of the ITAP. Um, the ITAP funding that we received was approximately 835,000. Um, you heard during your Public Works, uh, committee meeting from Mr. Martin that the, uh, initial phase will be towards exterior renovation, which first will be the roof. I'll let Dan Martin go into that, um, following my discussion. However, as stated, in order for us to begin the project, um, the City Council does need to approve the agreement with IDOT, which is basically outlining the funding responsibilities for each agency. Um, for your convenience, in your packet was a copy of the, uh, agreement. Unless you have any questions, at this time, it would be appropriate, and should the City Council, uh, desire, to authorize execution of the agreement between the City of Lake Forest and IDOT, um, relating to the exterior renovation of the train station.
Any other questions for Karina?
I move to authorize execution of the agreement between IDOT and the City of Lake Forest relating to the exterior renovation of the East Lake Forest Train Station.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Five VAs, no NAs. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie. Our next item this evening is, uh, to engage the professional services of Harbo Architects PC to complete the construction documents for the east train station Phase 1 exterior restoration. We did speak of this, uh, earlier again at the Public Works meeting this evening. Uh, Dan Martin is here to, to discuss or take any other questions. Anything to add, Dan, or we, I know we went through it earlier, so.
I was ready to say, I could go through it again, or would we like to?
Actually, uh, Mike, one more, uh, item was brought to my attention by Kathy, which is the architect also has to be approved by IDOT, isn't that correct, Dan?
Yes, they, it's good to have, and.
And they would approve this architect as well, so. One more. Thank you, Kathy, for bringing that up. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, retaining, uh, Harbo, uh, Architects to develop the remaining construction, uh, documents on the east train station project.
And second.
The roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Five VAs, no NAs. Motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie. Thanks, Dan. Uh, our next item on the agenda this evening is approval of Waveland Park Playground Capital Project, presented by Director Parks and Reparation, Mary Van Arsdale. Mary?
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Thank you so much, uh, for allowing me to come tonight to talk about the Waveland Park Playground Project. Um, I put together a packet for you of information that I will, um, cover for you quickly. Um, just to remind you that this is the second element that we are looking at replacing at Waveland Park this year. Uh, we started about a month ago on the replacement of the tennis courts, and we changed that to three tennis courts and one basketball court. That project should wrap up in the next 10 days. Um, the current playground at Waveland Park was constructed in 1991. It's at its end of its useful life. We have a number of elements that are rusted and, and the acrylic is cracked. Um, we have rotting timbers and fencing, which is the perimeter of that particular playground, um, area. And then we have flooding concerns that happen there on an occasional basis, uh, due to the pond that's immediately adjacent to that. And we do have some safety concerns due to the fact that, uh, we no longer are in compliance with our swing set configuration, or the fact that we have, uh, pine trees and things planted next to the playground, which cause choking hazards, et cetera, for children. So, um, what we're recommending and, uh, was to replace this and relocate the playground. We did seek resident feedback through, um, meetings at neighborhood, community-wide neighborhood, park meeting last fall. We since have had a ma- neighborhood we, meeting at Waveland Park facility itself. And then we did a mailing to the 205 homes in the neighborhood and, which in, included a survey that was attached that they could respond to, and we also posted on the city's website. Um, the relocation of the playground we're recommending is to put it in the infield of what is the east softball diamond. We've not programmed that diamond for the last three years, 'cause, uh, girls, uh, sports and programs for softball in particular has, uh, got, reduced in size. We haven't been using that field. And there's still two, uh, baseball diamonds on the west side of that park, so there's still that amenity, uh, available for the community. And then where we'd like to do is, uh, replace the current playground, um, area with, we would just regrade that area, put some seed in there, and make that a nice shaded picnic area. We do have some picnic tables already there. We kind of move them around a little bit out of the pond flooding or the soft areas. Um, so, this would give us a nice picnic area next to the pavilion. Um, and if we approve the project here tonight, then we would be able to begin construction in August, and we would have the playground most likely completed by the end of September. This is the, uh, just a picture of the park itself, and I'm just pointing out that currently, uh, this is the pond, this is the playground where it is located right now, and we'd be putting it here on this, a portion of this infield area. And so you can see how we get, uh, sightline and visibility from the park for whenever you're using the playground. Be a nice shaded area here, right adjacent to the pavilions and the washrooms, and would just, uh, overall enhance, I think, and improve this site, uh, functionality. Um, this is the playground design that I put in your packet and that's gone through the park board re- uh, review process. We did do two designs for the playground. This was the one that, uh, the park board did select, uh, for a number of reasons, the volume of slides, climbing features, uh, it's multi-age dimensional, uh, preschool all the way through elementary grade, and also it had some shade structure elements which were very desirable. We did present it at the park board meeting, a color scheme that was done in blue and green and red, and, uh, feedback from, um, some of the residents, as well as from the park board, asked that I redo the color scheme, and so we did do it to a green and tan color scheme, to kind of, uh, help it blend in a little bit more with the, uh, the overall park. The, um, the surface material that we're asking for to go in this area is this port in place underneath the main playground structure. We have that currently at the Deer Path, uh, preschool playground, which is right behind the rec center. We also have it in portions of it underneath the play equipment down at the beach, and it is a terrific, uh, product that really gives us longevity, less maintenance on a weekly and annual basis, and is a, uh, a wonderful product, uh, for children with special needs to be able to use it as well. It, that port-in-place, uh, product would actually be a blend of green, black, and tan to try to tie all this together, and it will blend in more with the park. But if we use that on the slide, you wouldn't see any of the equipment. So, um, that would be also, uh, element that, uh, would change it from what you're seeing up there. But we are proposing wood chips underneath the two supplemental pieces, the swings and the web structure, so that, um, and the reason for that is, A, to cut our costs, lower our cost, and in fact, there's not a lot of running under the web area, so you don't have the kick-out and the replenishment of the, the wood chips on a weekly basis, which is what is very time-consuming for our staff. And then underneath the swings, we're proposing to put in what we call kind of the scuff pads, so where the children's feet push off, or people push off, you don't kick the wood chips out. So, in this price that we have here, we'd be putting those small pads in amongst the wood chips, right at the base of where your feet would be under the swing sets.
Is, is that what you call fiber, or what, what is?
Um, the, the chips are fiber, so they do meet the ADA code requirement.
What is fiber? I didn't know.
Fiber is a manufactured, engineered wood chip, so it's been smoothed and contoured, and it has some, uh, binding elements in it, so it doesn't splinter, and it doesn't compact like, uh, regular just wood chips that we would get if we chip our, you know, trees here in town that we use around our planting beds. You can no longer use just wood chips. You have to have a minimum of fiber in the playgrounds. But you're supposed to, uh, inspect your fiber chips every week, replenish them every week to certain depths depending on the playground equipment, and that's where it gets extremely time-consuming for our crews, you know, to be able to do that, and it gets costly, so. Um, we're kind of, that's why we're encouraging and recommending moving in the direction of the port-in-place, because then that maintenance is diminished. Um, just to give you an idea, this, the orientation that we're looking at for the playground is in this bottom corner, and this, uh, it really would be, um, almost as you see it here, and that the playground would be the first structure you would encounter coming off the, uh, the parking lot, and then you would, uh, play on the play equipment with the swing set and the, the fiber chips towards the north side of the, of the play area. Um, this was the budget, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question, and this is, again, point of DSC for me. When you back up the slides to the slide areas?
Mm-hmm.
With kids coming down the slides, wouldn't you need kind of like a wood, uh, chip surface as compared to a static surface in that area, just to break, or not to have a, an ankle come into contact and not have a giving surface?
Um, it's rubberized, so there is. It's rubberized, so there is a give to it, and it's, it has a soft cushion feel, which is actually great, because the kids, when they, they come off, they end on their knees, or they fall forward, they're falling onto a rubberized surface, which is a lot safer for the children. So there's actually enhanced safety aspects from this surface as well. But, yeah, I can, you know, when kids are running and they stub their toe, that would be, you know, more of that kind of thing, but we don't see those kinds of accidents at the playgrounds much.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions on the design, or?
I have a question about those canopies.
Yes.
What are they made of?
It's a, it's a stretched mesh fiber. It's a cloth material. We have them at the, play sales are at Northcroft Park and at Deer Path Community Playground now. They stay up year-round. They're really nice weather, you know, dependent, so that they don't fade over time with their colors and stuff, so...
Are there supporting bars underneath it? It looks, it looks like there may be. I can't really tell from this.
Yeah, the, you're talking about the what holds them up?
Yeah.
They're, they're steel posts that prop them up, and then they are, can are levered out. That is also what we're recommending, though, you know, just for the purpose of the slide. We're going to have two benches that would be on the perimeters, and they would have the matching small sails over them for shade as well. That was, again, a request that came from the residents at our neighborhood meetings and from the survey, to, to add some shade for the parents when they're watching on the playgrounds.
Can they take heavy snow loads?
They can. They're really very, very durable. We've had ours up through the, this blizzard in February, they held up, so that was a beautiful thing. So, they do come with a warranty, too, for five years, for that kind of, any kind of damage.
Mayor, I had a quick question on your budget. You have a line item for landscape material. Can you give us an idea of what you plan to do with that?
Well, the, let me go to this back one slide. The, part of that is the playground won't take up the entire infield, what was the softball diamond, so we're going to need to, to grass seed and, and kind of do the edges to that. We'd also like to put a few shade trees that will grow in over time near this playground, so that it won't be just dependent on the shade structures. Though we're trying as much as possible, you can see in this picture, actually, you can see the outline of a soccer field. So, we do have soccer in that area, so we're not adding a lot of trees to that. The other thing with the tennis courts, we just recently put in the grade. We kept all the grindings on site and built the asphalt on top, and that has changed a little bit of the pitch around that edge of those tennis courts. So we're, you know, slowly grading that back, and we're going to be seeding that, so the seed will help us from that perspective. And then, we are recommending that pines are right here, they're right adjacent to this, the existing playground, and then there's some arbor vida that break, that are at this west side of the tennis courts. The pines have diplodia tip light, and they need to come out, plus they are kind of a nuisance in that area with the sap and everything. And then the arbor vida that's at the west end of the tennis courts, they only grew up against that fence, and they were used initially for wind block, and that's why they were planted. They are all dead on the, on the backside, so we're going to remove those. I have had a resident come forward, and he's donated brand-new wind screens to go on that west end of the, of the basketball court to help with that. So we most likely won't replant this area, and then we're going to take out those pines, and we'll kind of see what needs to be spruced up. The other element is around the pavilion. There's no landscaping around the pavilion at all. It's just dirt. And part of that is the rain off, that comes off the eaves and just drowns some things there, but we're going to take the wood chips out of the current playground and help wood chip, and then actually put in some real good plants that can withstand some, well, moisture there and enhance that pavilion, because it's pretty starved right now. So those are the kinds of things, you know.
Yeah, where I was going, either the, both the pavilion as well as the new picnic area, if you could, you know, find something in the budget to, to try to do some additional plantings there, I think that'd really go a long way.
And that's, we're kind of waiting to see some of our pricing for that, and then how much we really need to do from the grading and the seed, but we can do as much, you know, we could do a little bit more as we need as well.
Okay, thanks.
With that.
Mary?
Yes.
Question for you. When I saw this color thing in the bank of our packets, and I saw this, you call it a webbing, a web device?
Yes, uh-huh.
My first impression, it was kind of scary, to be honest with you. Because I can envision all sorts of potential downside to this, is a toy for kids. How safe is it? Are those ropes? I mean, I can envision a kid getting tangled up in this thing, and nobody being there.
They, they are tension cables, and they're very tightly strong, so you, they do not budge from the shape that they're in. So there's no entanglement possibilities for the kids to go around their neck or anything like that.
So it's almost solid?
It's like solid, but they're with tension cables, and they are hugely popular with children at all ages, and I've, I've had them in other communities and have watched children play on them quite a bit. They're very, very popular.
And they're safe?
They're very safe, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just a comment. We were out there with the baseball team practicing a few weeks ago on the east infield, and I wondered, oh my gosh, has this been overlooked? But now you've explained why. But we were brought to a halt by a lightning strike. On the pavilion, I think there was a yellow rotating beacon that might, we all assumed it was a lightning strike indicator, is that correct?
No, actually, there, I believe it's a surge protection, oh, Dan left, but we don't have a Thor Guard at that park.
Oh, okay. Do we, and so that led, leads to my next question. Do we have lightning indicators at the parks?
We have them at a few of the parks. We have them at Deer Path, which is actually a slave from Deer Path Golf Course, so we don't actually have a separate system there. We have them out at Town Line, and we have them at West Park right now. We don't have them at South or Northcroft and some of those others. The one at Town Line was actually donated by AYSO, which is why we added it at the time out, out at Town Line. But it is something we are lacking in adding, you know, having those features in all of our parks.
Okay. And last, one of the residents asked me, I can't remember who it was, or they commented that they were disappointed we eliminated one of the tennis courts there, and I think it had something to do with the Woodlands Girls tennis team, and they, disappointed because they can't hold their matches there anymore.
Correct.
And I said to call you, maybe about Northcroft, or where else do we have four tennis courts?
We've been talking to them, Northcroft, or Woodlands Academy, they, they can use Waveland for their practices, but they need four courts together when they play for their, their matches. In the past, when they filled out their permit, they've really indicated this for practices, so we weren't quite aware they ran their matches for four. But we can put them at West Park, and we also have Everett Tennis Courts, so we're working on the, one of those destinations for them. So, I think they'll be squared away.
Great.
With that. I, I also wanted to mention, because this came up since the approval of the tennis courts, is that resident whose son was, who passed away is a sixth grader here in town, the Jaquil family, she would like to help pay for...